Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District Six. This is the eighth day of January 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Azari?
Present.
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Campos Pitsi? Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District Six. We are glad that you are with us, whether you are here in person or whether you are catching this online or at a later date. We appreciate your presence. We do want to welcome back everyone. It's been a it's a new year, our first meeting in 2024, and so our teachers were back in the classrooms today. And so I want to say welcome back to all of our all of our teachers and tomorrow, all of our students come back. And so welcome back, students as well. We are excited to get started on on spring semester. And so just have a few announcements tonight. We have a relatively relatively short meeting tonight, but just one announcement I wanted to draw everyone's attention to, and that's on Saturday, January 20th. The Pathways to Success Conference will be happening. That's a partnership between Greeley-Evan School District Six and UNC. And so UNC will be hosting that Pathways to Success Conference, and that's a conference that features our avid sophomores and juniors in our avid program with their families. And what they get to do is learn a little bit about what it's what it's like to be in college and to get a start on on registering for college. And so we encourage you, if you've got a you've got a junior or sophomore, rather, I was about to say junior and senior, but sophomore, junior in in our avid program, please check that out and make sure that that you might attend that. And so that's really the one announcement that I have tonight. So again, welcome, and we'll get started with our meeting. And the first thing we need to do is approve our agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Sing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda tonight is our Council of Student Representatives report. And so I think, oh, work session report, sorry. I'm skipping one. Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Work session report. Ms. Lemon, will you give us our work session report, please?
The work session began with the opportunity for board members to provide comments and reports. After reviewing upcoming events, the board heard a presentation about preliminary graduation data from Assistant Superintendent Anthony Osmus and Director of Instruction Brian Lamos. Legal Counsel Nathan Fall presented a legislative update, and the work session ended with the opportunity for board members to debrief the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And now we're to our Council of Student Representatives report, and I invite Mr. Osmus to to come up and introduce our Council of Student Representatives. Just want to point out, and I forgot to introduce them earlier, but Ms. Natalie Luiza Valenzuela is with us tonight, as well as Reagan Madellis, who's also serving with us and sitting with us tonight. And so we appreciate your presence especially. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Osmus. Thank you. President Matthews, members of the board, this is always a great part of the night when our students get to actually speak. And so tonight, we have students from ECA that's here. And actually, I'm going to turn this over to the Principal of ECA, Kim Silva, to introduce her students.
Good evening, President Matthews and members of the board. Thank you so much for having our ECA students from Student Council of Representatives for our update. You've actually had an opportunity to meet both of them earlier this year as they joined me for the the yearly update we do for Early College Academy for the Board of Education. And you've probably gotten to know Natalie pretty well, as she attends many meetings here with you. So they have a few things to share. I just wanted to say TJ and Natalie are incredible students. I am so proud to be their principal at ECA. We're going to miss them immensely. They probably have already met graduation requirements, so I'm probably going to have to let them graduate at the end of the year. But we're really going to miss them. Natalie and TJ, I've worked with them for the past four years at ECA, and they came to ECA as students, learning to be high school students, learning to be college students at the same time. And now they're college, full-time college students with leadership roles in our school. They are very academically driven. They work very, very hard for their in their studies. And they also very, very much care about our school and the student body at our school, and have worked hard to plan some some pretty fun things that you're going to hear about here shortly. So I'm going to turn it over to Natalie to start.
Good afternoon, President Matthews, board members, and sadly, no Dr. Pilch. But I hope you all had a wonderful break, and I am so excited to be back for sadly my last semester of high school. My name is Natalie Luiza Valenzuela, a senior from Early College Academy. I have several positions in CSR. I am the Communication Specialist, the Treasurer, and the Permanent Student Voice Representative on the Board. For today's presentation, TJ and I had a hard time figuring out what we wanted to discuss, since earlier this year, we gave a presentation of what ECA is. Just to remind everyone, Early College Academy is a partnership that allows students to graduate from high school with an Associate of Arts degree. We take both high school and college classes as freshmen and sophomores, and then our full-time college students, junior and senior years. So wanting you to hear some cool aspects of the school, we thought it would be interesting for you to learn about a day in the life at ECA. Our schedules as seniors look different depending on what classes we are taking. However, many of us had an off block at the beginning of the day, which honestly is pretty cool, because we get to sleep in, and as seniors, we definitely need it. After first period this last semester, I had my art appreciation class that allowed me to learn and understand things differently and uniquely in not just the art world, but also in the real, real world. Sorry. My next class of the day was a new class ECA offered this year, Yearbook, in which both TJ and I have officer positions. He's the copy editor, and I am the editor-in-chief. One of the main things that we always discussed during this class was how fortunate and grateful that Yearbook was finally a class and not a club. We know that if it were a club like years prior, it probably would have been harder with all of our schedules. That's not to say, though, that we came across obstacles and challenges, but we came together as a team and as a result have pulled together an amazing book. I am beyond grateful for my team and looking forward to this next semester. My fourth period class was a class that challenged me in ways I didn't know I could be challenged, my Intro to Literature. I have always loved writing and thinking deeper about literature, and that class was that and more. Trying to get those essays done before 11:59 PM was a struggle, don't get me wrong, but each time I finished them, I had this feeling of accomplishment that I don't think any other class has made me feel. Right after literature was lunch, and we unfortunately had only a 30-minute lunch break. I, however, last semester was fortunate enough to be one of the couple of students who had a long lunch, since my fifth period was another off block. And that meant endless food runs with one of my closest friends and too much money spent. Afterward, I came back and had my environmental science class, which surprisingly enough was my favorite class of my fall semester. Growing up, I always had a very love-hate relationship with any science class, but in this class, I can strongly say I enjoyed enjoyed and retained the information thanks to our amazing professor. And last but not least, my last class of the day was college algebra, the actual most challenging class of my fall semester. I have never been the best at math, so going to this class, I was already worried. But if there's one thing I am grateful for, it's the immense amount of support that I received to make sure I was able to pass the class, not only from the professor, but from our tutors at school and even our counselors. I have shared about a day in a day in the classroom looked like for me this past fall. TJ is now going to share his experiences outside the classroom.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is TJ Gurney. I'm currently a senior at Early College Academy, and for this portion of the evening, I wanted to reflect and share some of my experiences. More specifically, I wanted to discuss what the extracurriculars and end of the year look like at ECA. Not only have I made many incredible memories and long-lasting friendships through these programs, but I've also been able to completely immerse myself in the wide range of leadership opportunities available. Previously, I shared my experiences relating to the academic successes I found within my career at ECA. While this certainly played a huge role in the overall positive impact, I feel that the extracurricular activities cannot be ignored in this conversation. While ECA students still have the ability to participate in sports through a school of their choice, a plethora of clubs and organizations exist within the school as well. As of now, we have 17 officially recognized clubs that offer a variety of fun and engaging activities for students to participate in. From building a custom computer and electronics and programming club to writing epic tales of fantasy and creative writing club, there's a little something for everybody. For me personally, I found the most fun in philosophy club as well as National Honor Society. Not only have both of these extracurriculars encouraged me to think critically, but they have also introduced me to new people who motivate me to be the very best version of myself. Going outside of my comfort zone to try something new has been one of the reoccurring themes throughout my time over at ECA. No matter what, though, I've always found myself learning important lessons and growing as a person. These experiences combined with the satisfaction of succeeding in my academic career as my senior year approaches truly reminded me of how lucky I am to be an ECA student. However, it does not just stop with clubs. ECA has always been able to embrace its small community by holding school-wide events. One of the most recent of these has been assemblies with class competitions. These fun events have not only encouraged us to participate and show school spirit, but have also served as a reminder of the beautiful community that lies within the school. Events like these highlight a huge milestone in the school's history and exemplify how far we have come in terms of support and care for students. The joy and pride I felt as I watched the first assembly and class competition take place can hardly be put into words. From the very beginning of my time at ECA, I knew there was something unique about the school that went far beyond just the college and high school hybrid. One of these organizations that focuses on building community is NAVCRU. The NAVCRU program began a couple of years ago and has since hosted a wide range of events that encourage both under and upperclassmen to bond and enjoy their high school experiences together. As a member of NAVCRU myself, I could not be prouder of the progress we have made as a team. In addition, participation from the Student Council has increased significantly across all grade levels. Seeing this process go from the planning stage all the way to official assemblies fills my heart with gratification, especially as a senior. Being able to look at the implementation of the new school-wide events as well as general school improvements lets me know that the next graduating class will have just as much as a memorable experience as I did. Events like these, as well as the clubs and organizations offered, exemplify this idea even further and prove that community is one of the cornerstones of success in ECA. As my second semester of senior year approaches, I can't help but continue to reflect on my career at ECA. The continuous support from staff, both on the high school and Ames side, have helped me lay out a plan for the upcoming years of my life. This support is one that I would argue is unlike any other school, as the dedication shown by members of ECA staff is clear and felt school-wide. Over the course of the last four years, I feel both the school and myself have grown in ways previously only imagined. However, one event that has remained consistent is that is the end-of-the-year field day and award ceremony. This ceremony allows for students to look back upon their achievements and receive recognition for the hard work they have done. Following this, we gather at the local park to enjoy some outside activities together before the school year ends and summer officially begins. Traditionally, I looked at this event as a time for me to recognize the self-growth I've achieved over the course of the year. However, with my final year approaching, I see this event as a reflection of how we are all successful within the school, each in our own unique ways. It shows that no two students are exactly alike, and instead we excel in different areas. This only furthers my appreciation for members of the district and the support they provide to our school. Without the attention, assistance, and continuous care, these events and successes would not have been possible. I cannot wait for the Class of 2024 Senior Countdown, in which all the seniors gather together to count down the final minutes of their high school careers. This tradition not only honors our hard work, but also reinforces the idea of how important community is to our school. My story is only one of hundreds of successes that come from ECA each year. For that, I am incredibly thankful and grateful for the career I've built at Early College Academy. Thank you.
Well, thank you both.
With everything said, I guess the main takeaway from our fall semester was that going to ECA was the best decision we made for our academic careers. Although ECA is not a traditional high school and didn't have some of the same high school experiences as students at other high schools, ECA gave all students, including us, the opportunity to experience unique and challenging things in both the academic and personal aspects of high school. We know that part of all of this is thanks to our community, voters, the school board, and District Six, who continue to support ECA in everything that we do. All in all, we hope that our presentations give insight to everyone on how District Six continues to make personal success stories like TJ's and mine. At this point of the presentation, you might be expecting us to request a longer lunch or a new school building, but I'll tell you what I told Ms. Silva when we were planning our presentation, and she wanted to know our plan. TJ and I talked about it, and at this point, we don't feel like we need to ask for anything because we've received so much. All we hope is that you continue to support ECA and don't forget about us. But as ECA continues to grow and expand, they might need a new building in the future. So think of that before me and TJ or after TJ and I are gone. So, thank you.
Well, thank you both for being here. As we are very appreciative of ECA, and you guys always make us very proud in the work that you put in and your involvement in the community and at Ames College, Community College. And so I don't know if we have any questions from from board members. I'm not seeing any coming in at the moment, but but thank you both for for being here tonight, and we appreciate your time and your dedication to the district. Next on our agenda tonight is our Superintendent's Honor Roll. And as Natalie mentioned, our superintendent is not with us tonight. I think this is the first time in the six years that I've been on the board that the superintendent has had to miss the entirety of a of a meeting. And so she's just feeling under the weather tonight. And so we wish her a speedy speedy recovery. But tonight, her superintendent's honor roll is going to be taken by Mr. Anthony Osmus. And so invite Mr. Anthony Osmus back up. Make his presentation.
President Matthews, members of the board, I'm Anthony Osmus, the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, and we are truly in the presence of greatness tonight. The essence of the superintendent's award is to recognize the great things going on in the district, and we will definitely do that tonight. First with me, front and center, is Ms. Acadia Neal. Acadia is being recognized for the superintendent's honor roll tonight because of her performance in December at the 2023 Colorado State Thesbian Conference, also noticed since Thescon 2023. Thescon is the Rocky Mountain Region's leading educational theater event. It's the 2023 Colorado State Thesbian Conference. The Colorado State Thesbian Society hosted its 59th Annual Middle School, High School, and Middle School Theater Conference on December 7 through 9. Colorado Thesbys and the National Thesbys are an educational program that offers conference delegates the opportunity to receive constructive feedback on prepared theatrical material and technical designs. The goal for participating students is to receive feedback from industry professionals on their skills, strengths, and weaknesses to grow as theater artists and individuals. The events culminate into the selection of a performance showcase cast of outstanding entries. This year was over 4,000 attendees. 12 students received this honor to perform on the main stage. Acadia was selected to perform a solo musical theater piece at this year's main stage closing ceremony. This is the first time that Greeley West has had a student make it to the main stage for an individual performance. So congratulations, Acadia, on your outstanding performance. And Acadia would like to say just a few words, and then we'll get a picture. And we'd like to honor Acadia with this Outstanding Superintendent's Honor Roll certificate.
President Matthews and members of the board, I just wanted to give you all a quick thank you. I know I am dual-enrolled at Greeley West and Frontier Academy, and that's sort of unusual, and I really appreciate you guys going out on a limb for me. I have learned so much under the guidance of Mrs. Fremol. She's such an amazing teacher, and I definitely would not be where I am today doing all the things I can do. And a special thank you to Mr. Osmus for advocating for me so well in that situation. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
As stated, we are in the honor of, do you keep going?
Keep going.
So we are in the honor of a celebrity here with me. Mr. Caleb Flores is teaching is a teacher of English Language Arts, culturally linguistic diverse, teaching and reading at West High School, and was recognized on December with the Milken Educator Award. The Milken Educator Award is given to 75 elementary and secondary school teachers, principals, and specialists around the country annually who are furthering excellence in education. Mr. Flores is the only educator from Colorado to receive the award in 2023. Mr. Flores was surprised with the honor during an all-school assembly in December, which the kids went absolutely crazy when he received this award, they love him there, which was presented by the Colorado Commissioner of Education, Susanna Cordova, and the Milken Educator Award Senior Vice President, Dr. Jane Foley. Mr. Flores was recognized for supporting students from diverse backgrounds, advocating for equitable education, striving for individual instructional growth, and for being a kind and welcoming instructor. Along with a $25,000 cash award, Mr. Flores will receive a paid trip to Los Angeles in June, and will have multiple ongoing professional development opportunities. Mr. Flores is a Greeley native, a Northridge High School graduate, and earned his undergraduate and master's degrees from the University of Northern Colorado. We are grateful that Caleb chooses to make a difference in the lives of students and staff at District Six, and we are proud to call him our own. So congratulations, Mr. Flores, on your well-deserved recognition.
Wow, thank you very much, President Matthews, School Board, Anthony and Dr. Pilch, who I'm thinking about tonight, and everyone else who was who was there for the recognition and and for the time tonight. Just a couple of things I wanted to share as as kind of an update. It was a complete surprise. I had no idea. We were told that the building was getting an award, and so the when they said what it was, I was like, oh, that's definitely somebody else. And then when they said my name, it was just a complete, you know, but it's it's an honor that I do not take lightly. I've learned a little bit about the Milken Foundation and just the things that they do for for educators and to encourage teaching, teacher retention and longevity in in the field is just phenomenal. So I want to say thank you to them. Another development I found out, I'm going to be, I was with the award, I was selected to be put on the Commissioner's Teachers Cabinet for Commissioner Susanna Cordova. So I'll be representing Greeley and meeting with with the Commissioner along with like 18, 19 other teachers from around the state, implementing policy and talking about policy that they're thinking at the state level, which is a huge honor, some, you know, just something I could never imagine. Like Anthony said, I am a Greeley kid, born and raised baby. I'm proud to be from Greeley. I'm a Madison Elementary Franklin Middle School and Northridge High School graduate, went on to UNC. I'm a proud Latino, I'm a proud Mexican-American, and and I I look at our city and as our at our school district with just unlimited potential. I know that the future is bright and already from some of the things that we've seen tonight. It's just incredible what students are doing here. My students inspire me every day to come to work and be able to have the privilege to do what I get to do each day. And I want to encourage students and and Greeley residents, people who are from here, to join us, join the join me and join me and my colleagues in the classroom. We need more of us to to come in and join the great work that's going on. We need people who look like us, who who talk like the students, and who know where they come from, to get into the game. But I just want to say thank you again. It's an honor.
Congratulations to both Acadia and to Caleb. Appreciate you being here and joining us tonight. And thank you, Mr. Osmus, for filling in for Dr. Pilch. And next on our agenda is our Superintendent's Report. And for for this report, we're going to have Chief of Security John Gates come forward and give the Superintendent's Report.
President Matthews and members of the board, good evening to you. I am slipping into my other role here just briefly, and I'm proud to read a proclamation in honor of School Board Recognition Month. School Board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities, and in that capacity are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their students. And whereas school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars, and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust. And whereas school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education, that sets high standards for the education of all students and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas school board members adopt policies to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy, and are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with policies. And whereas the board members elected to school board positions deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of volunteer service to public education and the students of our district, now for their now therefore I, John D. Gates, Mayor of the City of Greeley, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Board of Education for Greeley-Evan School District Six, and proclaim the month of January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month in District Six. With that, I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members, and in working with them hand in hand to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's students. With that, I thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor Gates. That concludes our Superintendent's Report tonight. And so we're on to a next agenda item, which is public participation. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lemon, but we don't have any public participants tonight. All right. So we won't read the normal reading before our public participation, and we'll move right on to our consent agenda. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes all officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Sing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next tonight, we have our Public Notice of Meetings and Designated Postings, Posting Sites. And this is also an action item that needs a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the district website as the designated posting site for the public notice of meetings.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on this motion? It's pretty straightforward. Not singing? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And finally, tonight, we have Mill Levy Certification, and this too is an action item that needs a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six certify the mills as presented for a total of 47.04 mills.
Second.
Second.
Thank you both. To introduce this, Ms. Megan Sponsler has come to, to the podium. And so, Ms. Sponsler, will you just give us an update on what this is before we open this up to board members' questions and comments?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, President Matthews. Good evening, members of the board. This is an annual process, but this looks a little bit different this year. Typically, we bring this to you in December, and that is set in state statute. However, this year, there was a special legislative session that occurred, and that set these dates back a little bit. So we now have until January 10th to complete this action item for you. It just so happened that we had a board meeting tonight, so that worked out perfectly. But this is really the certification of the mills, and this is what gets transferred to the county treasurer's office. And then that's what goes on your tax bills when you get those as homeowners or other property owners in the county. This year, our total program is what they call it. So the funding coming from the state of Colorado requires that we issue a mill of 27.04. Then we have our mill levy override mills at 10, and our bond redemption mills at 10. So in total, we have 47.04 mills that we would levy, assuming that you approve that tonight. I will point out that this is a slight reduction from last year's mills because of the amount in the bond levy that we would have to issue in order to make those payments that are required for our bond. So in, in total, yes, property values have gone up. But with this reduction in the bond mill, it's really not that significant of an increase for a homeowner. It comes out to be approximately a 3% increase over last year's property tax. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sponsler. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Bentley?
I just wanted to clarify that the mills on the, the bond, because the mills are essentially a percentage, right? And the bond payment's a fixed dollar amount. So that it just fluctuates, depend on the valuation, right? There's one variable there, not two.
That's correct. Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, Ms. Sponsler. So, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And that is all the business that we have tonight. Again, congratulations to Caleb. Congratulations to Acadia on their awards. Speedy recovery to our Superintendent, Dr. Pilch. And this meeting is adjourned.